Good evening. It is 6:01. I call this meeting of the Clear Creek Independent School District. It's 6:01 on Monday, January 24th. I call this meeting of the Clear Creek Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present and that this meeting has been duly called and that its notice has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. And we will move to recess. We'll go straight to recess at 6:02. And I think we're going to take a photo.
Yes.
Before we do that.
No, I didn't either.
Yeah. It just felt like part of the...
There we go.
Hmm. Very nice.
Full house. It is 6:45, and I call us back into open session. And we will begin with our Pledge of Allegiance and Texas Pledge.
Good evening. I'd like to ask Kennedy Brown, Chloe Liu, and Arturo Sanchez from the Westbrook Intermediate Wired Robotics Team to come forward to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and Texas Pledge, followed by a moment of silence, and I'll meet you down front. Good evening, and they did it again. And by "they," I'm referring to the amazing Westbrook Wired Robotics Team for making national headlines for the second time based on performances and competition in the first semester. And so at this time, I'd like to ask the team, as well as their sponsors and volunteers, to come forward to receive a medal of congratulations. And we also have a few who could not attend in person but are here virtually. So again, students, sponsors, and volunteers, if you can come forward to receive the medallions. So we will have a photo in a minute, but I want to share some amazing information about them as they gather. So in early December, in Frisco, Texas, the Westbrook Wired Robotics Team took on teams from across the state and beyond at the Best of Texas Championships. It's important to note that most of the teams that they were competing against were high school students. Our Westbrook Intermediate Robotics Team cleaned house, winning the most points out of the 46 teams. And this is the first time any CCIS team competing in the best robotics has placed this high in ratings. And they brought home the following: First Place Best Award, which is the highest overall point award; the Founder's Award for Creative Design; Best Exhibit and Interview; Best Software Design; Best Web Page Design; Best T-Shirt Design. That's six trophies for Westbrook in one day's competition. And I'm also pleased to have Principal Stephanie Cooper join us along with all the volunteers and sponsors. And let's see, Lisa Pfeiffer, right? So I would like to ask you, can you share a little bit about the role of the volunteers in contributing to student success?
Certainly, I'd love to. First of all, Les Kiyoko. Down there. I don't really think I need a mic. He's been with the team 22 years?
I've been with Westbrook 22 years.
Okay, but you've been doing Wired Robotics...
Since Westbrook opened.
Right, and before that at Webster Intermediate, when the Wave Program was at Webster Intermediate. And he's the lead engineering mentor, and he is the main man. He's the guy that makes this whole thing work. Otherwise, it wouldn't be here. David Hirsch has helped us out for several years. His child was on the team, and he's come back since his kid's gone to high school to help mentor the marketing team. And he is, that's his job. He has his own corporation that he markets. So teaching the kids how to market is amazing. And I know that his mantra is, "Let's do it again. Take it from the top." And we've always had to tell the kids, "I know you're junior high kids, but you're going to have to pretend you're adults, and you're going to have to take it up quite a few notches." The professionalism that we expect from these kids is very high. Elena Garza and Misha Allison, they are our marketing and community outreach mentors. They helped David with the marketing presentation. They also set up things to go out to the public and the businesses and schools to promote best robotics, which is part of what we get scored on. Joe Bibby, he has a son on the team, and he has been amazing for technical help and this year a software mentor. And Alex Lin, he's our drive coach. He's another person whose child went on to high school, and he comes back and helps us with the drive. Coach to pick the drivers, the timed trials, the constants, the advancement of strategy, how they're going to move the robot around the field. And that's why this team is so successful. We have amazing kids, and we have incredibly competent, diligent professionals who come and spend countless hours working with these kids. And that's why we are where we are.
Please join me in another team shout-out. You inspire us. You make us proud. Thank you. Well done.
If everybody will hold very still, we'll take two pictures, and I'll put them back together later.
Two pictures.
Okay, real chill. Just breathe. Can you do one more?
Fantastic. Way to go, Wired! Awesome, you guys. Thank you. Thank you to your seats. Thank you.
Thank you, parents. Without you, we couldn't be here as well.
Pretty amazing what they've accomplished and all the support.
Good to see you.
We'll wait just one minute. So next, we are honored to recognize two leaders who are celebrating very special career accomplishments. And first, I'd like to ask Coach Pam Crawford to come forward. Yay, Coach Crawford! And he has a medal? So Coach Crawford of Clear Springs High School has been coaching inspiring female basketball players for more than three decades, 37 years. And she's spent two decades coaching here in Clear Creek ISD, previously at Brook, most recently at Springs. And under her strong leadership and passion for the sport, she's been named among the top 100 high school basketball coaches in the 100-year history of the university interscholastic league. And in November, Coach Crawford and the Lady Chargers team celebrated her 700th career win. That is amazing. Coach Crawford, I know you spoke year in, year out with your student athletes about dreams and cultivating dreams and the key to success of those dreams. Can you share a little bit with us about how you leverage the concept of dreams to motivate and inspire your players?
That's a huge question. It was just something that came to me that I felt that would, that I could use as a foundation for them to feel that they needed to reach deep into their own dreams and what they wanted to accomplish. And so from that, I decided that we were going to make dream a thing every year. So, pretty simple.
Well, you make what you may say describe as simple. It's pretty amazing. So thank you for all you've done for our students. We, yes, we appreciate her principal and Kirby Killingsworth, the district athletic coordinator being here this evening as well.
Okay, right here, ready? Don't worry. There we go. Good.
And so if you head down FM 518, you will meet another outstanding leader and accomplished coach. So I'd like to ask Coach Scott Simons to come forward, and please join me in congratulating him. Clear Spring High School's volleyball coach. So Coach Simons has achieved more than 500 wins. He's coached volleyball for 23 years. He served as a head coach at Creek for 18 years. And Coach Simons, along with Coach Crawford, are among only 10 coaches in Clear Creek ISD to have ever celebrated more than 500 wins, and that is incredibly impressive. And we'll take a photo in a moment, but before, I want to ask Coach Simons, you know, as educators, we always work to get the most out of the students and those we work with. So what are your, what's your key strategy, your strategies for motivating student athletes?
Well, first of all, Dr. Williams, I do have to point out, I'm at Clear Creek. I'm not at Clear Springs. That's a little bit of a sin you just did right there, but in our eyes. We are Clear Creek High. We are the first. We are the best, we believe. But, yes. You know, I would just say the biggest thing is, you know, we have challenges, you know, every season, you know, and, you know, whether we graduate a lot of kids or whatever obstacles that we have. But the biggest thing we always say is just no excuses. We're going to find a way to get, you know, the most out of what we have, you know. And I would say, I mean, the success that I've had a lot, you know, I've got great support from my family. You know, I've had great administration. Our principal, Jamie Magiski, unfortunately dropped a bomb on us last week that he's going to be retiring at the end of this year. And y'all, please hire a good one when he does leave here at the end of the year. But I've had a lot of support there. My team has had a lot of support. And I, but I will say that the number one thing is that the success that we've had, that's 100% of the players. You know, I don't play. I write the lineups, you know, I drive the bus. And, but it's all on them, and we've had a lot of success, and I give it all to them.
So Coach Simons, I know you said no excuses, so I'm just going to have to beg for forgiveness in terms of referencing Springs rather than Clear Creek High School, so thank you. So next, we are very pleased to recognize the Clear Creek Independent School District's Purchasing Department, which has received the Purchasing Award of Merit by the Texas Association of School Business Officials. And the Award of Merit was created to recognize Texas school districts who are committed to following the highest standards in the acquisition of goods and services. The team annually processes more than $90 million in purchase orders. So I'd like to ask the following CCISD team members to come forward, to be recognized, and to receive a medallion of appreciation. Greg Cruthers, Barbara Hoag, Stephanie DeJohnavich, Linda Bertram, and Sharla Vaie. Congratulations. And Christine Birch, of course, as well. Can y'all let's do a photo op as well? Great. Congratulations. Thank you. And they'll be recognized at the Texas Association of School Board Officials Annual Conference in March, or TASPO. You make us proud. So next, I'd like to ask the remaining board members on the day as to come down front, because January is School Board Appreciation Month in Texas. And it is our collective hope that you, our valued trustees, know that you're appreciated 365 days a year, not just during School Board Appreciation Month. I've had the distinguished honor of working alongside you over this past year, and it is clear that you are, you all are, there's no board in Texas and perhaps nationally that is more dedicated or more committed than you all. So we owe a deep debt of gratitude to you. And so on behalf of the entire Clear Creek ISD team and community, thank you for your service. And I would like to ask Mr. Robin Merritt, engineering and design teacher at Clear Creek High School, and Ty Halford, Creek Secondary Lead the Way teacher, to please stand. And the students in their class engraved the Texas School Board Appreciation Month logo titled "Rise Above" on a personalized gift for each of you. These are the same students who build hardware for the International Space Station, and they could not be with us here tonight because they're preparing for a big NASA competition. However, check out this short video on how the gifts were made.
Here at Clear Creek High School, the students and the HUNCH program are creating devices for NASA. I'm here with Wilbur. He's a junior here at Clear Creek High School. Wilbur, show us what you've got going on here.
So essentially, we have, the main thing about here is the, mostly his arm right here. So essentially, this has already been, gone through many different schools, and we're the latest school to get it, the latest version of it. And so far, we've made very small changes, like changing this locking mechanism right over here, and now we're mostly more into the testing part. We're going to be able to see what are the weak points of this current version of the arm, so then we can, if we, if there's ever a case where we find out that it needs to add more, need to add more, I guess, make it more robust, then we can see where exactly, where in the points we can actually see where we need to make it more robust.
Another student here in the HUNCH program is Bella. She's a senior. Bella, what are you working on?
Well, I'm actually in two engineering classes. For my art and civil class, I'm working on a fungus nanolab. And basically, what this is, is we're trying to create a rearrangeable and easy-to-access lab where you can grow fungus on the International Space Station.
We're here now with Robin Merritt. He's the instructor of the HUNCH program. Mr. Merritt, we've heard some incredible students talk about their amazing projects, but one of the things is these mugs that we're seeing, that all of the school board members will be getting shortly. So can you explain to us the process behind making those?
Well, what we do is, we took a mug. This is like one of the mugs that we made. You can see, this is our test piece. We made a pattern on, we found a pattern, kind of sorted on the internet, modified it. Then what we did is, we set up the pattern on the computer over here. Then the thing is, we transferred it over to the 3D, this laser. And then the laser cuts it out, and it will multiply as many as you want to put out. Then the thing is, all we had to do was change the names on the back.
So our school board members have received an outpouring of support from students, staff members, and parents this month with videos, signs, cards, and really a variety of gifts of appreciation. So if we could, we would have them all here to say thanks, but know that you are, your work is greatly appreciated. So we, a huge thank you for all you do. Oh, yes, thank you. Actually, I've just been in mind a very important part. I was going to do the photo first, but we've got several students from Clearbrook High School's PALS program, and Donna Stone and those students are coming forward now. So we appreciate you all being here. So would any of you like to share some thoughts?
Hello. Hi, my name is Sebastian Velasquez. We are with the Clearbrook PALS. We just wanted to be here tonight, and thank you guys so much for the hard work you guys do year-round. Understand, we understand that this is a volunteer thing, and we know very much what volunteer work does for not only ourselves, but the community around us. I mean, you guys are helping not only the people in this room, but also the thousands in our district. So we just want to say from the bottom of our hearts, thank you, thank you so, so much for everything that you guys do for us. So thank you.
And to show how much we appreciate you all, we, all of the Clearbrook PALS came together, and we made an appreciation jar that has written down some of what we think are some of the important things that you do, just to let you all know that what you all do does not go unnoticed, and that we appreciate you all very much.
We'd love to have you all as students in the photograph, just because I think that'd be a great representation of the work that you do in support of students. So if we can have a student between, one student between each board member, so.
We'll just give a few minutes for folks to enter the boardroom.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to present this district update. And the second semester is well underway, and before you know it, we will be celebrating seven graduation ceremonies. And in January and February, students in fifth grade will have the opportunity to tour their future intermediate school, and those in eighth grade will have visits from high school leaders. Communication will be forthcoming for parent nights and the course selection process. And the parent nights and tours will be held in person. As we've seen all over the United States, the Omicron variant has spread quickly and has impacted staffing in all industries. and has impacted staffing in all industries. I am very thankful for the staff members who are stepping in to fill classes, picking up extra bus runs, and working overtime to ensure students' needs are met. I want these staff members to know that we see you and we appreciate you. Without the ongoing efforts of our staff members, we would not be able to overcome the significant challenges related to much higher-than-usual staff absenteeism. Our daily active COVID cases within CCISD are lower than the daily active cases we saw immediately after winter vacation. Health authorities in Harris County and Galveston County are reporting that we appear to have reached and passed the peak of the January wave. They state that positive cases and hospitalizations remain high, but that generally speaking, trends are going in the right direction. Our health mitigation protocol is specific in terms of when we make a change in protocol stages, including the criteria for moving from stage three back to stage four. Based on conversations with health officials, we may be able to return to level four in early to mid-February. The specific timing of the return to level four will be driven by the data in our health mitigation protocol. On a related note, we'll be convening the CCISD School Opening Committee on February 9th to review our progress for this year and receive feedback on current protocols. I'd also like to take a moment to provide some clarity regarding parent visitors in our schools. Parents are still very much welcome into our schools for school events, parent-teacher conferences, and volunteering. And we're pleased with the high levels of parent presence that we're seeing in our schools. The only limitation, and it's a temporary one, is having visitors for lunch. And here's why. As I mentioned earlier, this latest variant has had a significant impact on staffing front offices and classrooms and other areas. Front office staff and administrators, like many other team members, currently have significant additional responsibilities relating to lower staff attendance. And this is even as we have lower attendance among front office staff and administrators. So having an influx of visitors at one time would be even more difficult. And when we welcome our parents back for lunches, we want to do it in a way in which we can safely and efficiently check in parent visitors. In addition to the logistics of hosting parents at lunchtime, with the rapid spread of the virus, we made the health decision to continue to social distance elementary students, which takes up additional space, including areas where parents would normally sit with their children. We are starting to turn a corner. I referenced the possibility of returning to stage four by mid-February, and that transition would include welcoming parents back to eat lunch with their children. We may be able to reinstitute the lunch access shortly before the return to stage three. So once the timing is finalized, parents will receive additional communication regarding logistics of lunch visits. Switching topics, the new Clearview High School opened this month. The rebuild of the old Webster High School building that had housed Clearview was part of the 2017 CCISD bond program. And we plan to celebrate with four ribbon-cutting ceremonies in March for the new Clearview High School, as well as major renovations of Hall Elementary, Landall Elementary, and Ed White Elementary. I want to commend the students, teachers, and other staff members, including JT Buford, involved with the 40th Annual Livestock Show and Auction, which was held last week. I attended several hours on Wednesday afternoon, watching the Steer and Heifer shows, and also attended the auction on Thursday evening. Now, as much as I enjoyed the shows themselves, I particularly appreciated walking around the Ag Center on Thursday and just talking with the students about the nature of their work, months-long work in preparing for the show, as well as their observations regarding the show itself and how they are proud of how their animals, of proud of the animals they'd raised. I also want to take a moment and thank our generous community partners who've supported our annual livestock show and radio. We'll recognize the grand champions at a future board meeting, but the event generated over 250,000, which is a record for FFA students. Also, be sure to buy your tickets for our high school musicals. Plays started last week and will continue through early February. I certainly enjoyed attending the Addams Family Show at Clear Creek High School last Friday evening. Now, the students did a great job with the Addams Family Musical at Creek. I'll share, though, that there was a special cameo appearance by Principal Jamie Majewski. And I want to thank Mr. Majewski, longtime principal of Clear Creek High School, for his years of service, because as was mentioned earlier, he has informed us that he'll be retiring at the end of this school year. He's been in Clear Creek ISD for 22 years. He joined us as a social studies teacher at Clear Creek High School in 2000. And so to see him retire as principal there really indicates his true love for the Wildcats. Thank you. Jamie Majewski leads with integrity and has always been an advocate for students. So we wish you the best. And that constitutes my district update this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Next, we will move to the community input portion of our meeting. The purpose of community input is for the entire board to receive feedback from citizens. The board will hear the public comments, but will not respond. Matters brought forth that require a response will be addressed by the superintendent as appropriate. All information received is subject to verification. Community input is scheduled for 30 minutes and has two forums. Those requesting to address the board in advance in the meeting are granted three minutes to address their topics. And those who sign up this evening prior to 6:30 are granted one minute. In a district our size, there will certainly be issues or topics which will understandably generate considerable interest from the public. It is important that members of our community be able to address the school board respectfully, without disruption, and without fear of intimidation from other attendees. On behalf of the board, the superintendent, and CCISD staff, we welcome your input during CCISD school board meetings. We request that everyone exhibit the respect and understanding each person rightfully deserves when addressing the school board during the public input portion of the meeting. And we have six, six three-minute speakers. And I think I'm counting five one-minute speakers. So we will start off with our three-minute speakers, with Mr. Doug Peterson, followed by Sheri Matola, followed by John Cabarruvis.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Doug Peterson, and I'm the liaison for the Bay Area of Harris County Precinct 2, Commissioner Adrian Garcia. And we made a presentation earlier of certificates of appreciation to the school board. And I'd like to read this letter, if I can get it done in 2 minutes and 37 seconds. "Esteemed Clear Creek Independent School District School Board, During the School Board National Recognition Month and throughout the year, I celebrate the critical work that the school board members across Harris County and the precinct 2 contribute to the success of our students, helping all children be successful learners. As strong advocates for public education, it is clear you work closely with parents, education professionals, and community members to create an education vision for our students, along with the strategies to reach that vision. Your oversight, in addition to adopting policies, approving budgets, and working closely with the superintendent, has resulted in a widely recognized reputation for education excellence. Considering COVID and other challenges in recent years, I applaud, this is Commissioner Adrian Garcia applauds, and everyone should applaud, your work and that of the superintendent to continue successful programs and define new approaches to provide a solid foundation for our public schools and safe environments for our students. In closing, I urge all citizens to join me in recognizing the dedication and hard work of the Clear Lake, or Clear, excuse me, Clear Creek ISD Board of Trustees, to meet the diverse educational needs of all children, empowering them to be competent, productive contributors to our democratic society." And I misspoke there when I said Clear Lake. And the reason for that is, I'm a proud father of three daughters who all graduated from Clear Lake, went to college across the country, and returned to Houston to be teachers. They've been all teachers, and I could go on forever, but I'll just leave it at that. Both of their grandparents were teachers also. So thank you. You're doing great work. We appreciate it. And I will tell Commissioner Adrian Garcia all about the positive energy I felt here tonight for all the work you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
30 years ago, I was sitting exactly where you were sitting. I had resigned my teaching job over at Stewart Elementary to run for the school board. I later went on to Pasadena ISD to teach over there, because of course, I could not sit on the board and be a teacher in the district at the same time. I'm coming here tonight to tell you I have sat where you sat. And I know how many hard decisions you must make. And I know that every decision that you make brings into account the diverse population of this school district and the needs of every single student in this school district. I was very thrilled, at the time that I served on the board, to be involved with the Seabrook Magnet Program beginning. My two daughters were actually attendees to the Seabrook Science Magnet Program. And they are today engineers, mechanical engineers, within the Houston area. One, at the age of 39, became a partner recently in her engineering firm at SMB. She ranks as the highest of the female engineers in the company. The other is, at 42, also the highest-ranking female in her one Sub-C job as a mechanical engineer. Within everything coming out of, and they were so well-prepared going to Texas A&amp;M after coming out of, after coming out of this school district, going to Arman Bayou, to Seabrook's Science Magnet Program, and then to Clear Lake High School. There are so many students across the district right now that are just like my daughters. And one of the daughters went through the whole dyslexia program at the same time. All of the students need your cooperation and your understanding to have the programs given to them that they need to succeed, just as Mr. Peterson had talked about his. No matter what you have to put up with, no matter what happens as far as the outside world is concerned, please remember that there are so many of us that are behind you in every decision that you make. And we are supportive of you, and we will always be there with you in any of the decisions that you make, because we know you are doing it on behalf of the students in Clear Creek ISD.
I will be glad when we don't have to wear masks again. I just want to, I wanted to take just a quick minute to thank you for everything that you do. I know that you're volunteers at this. I've done volunteer work before, and sometimes it's thankless, and, but I do appreciate it. For those of you who do not wear your partisan politics on your sleeve, thank you very much for doing that. As you know, partisan politics does not belong in our schools, except for voter registration, which we should be doing. And it doesn't belong in this boardroom. So continue to listen to our healthcare workers, and our experts, and our accountants, and our scientists, so you can make the right decisions for this community, which I believe that you have for many, many years. So again, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
And next, we will move to Ms. Hannah French, followed by Mr. Joshua Foxworth, followed by Christine Perizzo.
Good evening. At the last board meeting, the board president asked the community to not judge Dr. Williams based off of what he did in Loudoun County Public Schools, including not reporting sexual assault to the state, the amount of spending, and the implementing of CRT. While all of those things matter, I find it most upsetting that some school board members would ask parents to not judge him for that, specifically the not reporting of sexual assault to the state. As a student, what does that say to them? As a parent, that tells me that some of you on this school board think that it's okay, and it is borderline supporting of sexual assault. While the school board may think we all hold blame and frustration with Dr. Williams, we do not. It's blatantly obvious that very few on the board actually care about the kids and have their best interests at heart. So with that said, we blame the board. You are Dr. Williams' boss. He may be the fall guy and take all the heat, but we know that you are his boss. You felt that a man not reporting sexual assault was the best fit for our district out of everyone. What does that say about you? All jobs are based off of past performances. Why is this job any different? This speaks volumes about some of you on this school board. It speaks volumes about your agenda and how our children are just a stepping stone for your politics. Gaslighting, bullying, and intimidating parents is not a good look. Our children are the most important. Protecting them is most important. And right now, it feels like we need to protect them from the school board.
Alright, alright. So CASL is the Collaborative for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning. This is how it defines, quote, transformative SEL. It gives multiple definitions. "Transformative SEL is a process whereby young people and adults build strong, respectful, and lasting relationships that facilitate co-learning to critically examine the root causes of inequity." Those root causes being race. Another definition, "This form of SEL is aimed at redistributing power to more fully engage young people and adults in working towards just and equitable schools and communities." It also states that SEL is, quote, "academic content that integrates issues of race, class, and culture." The CASL doc that introduces transformative SEL states that it, quote, "focuses on issues of race and ethnicity as a first step towards addressing the broader range of extent inequalities." Transformative SEL is anchored in the notion of justice-oriented citizenship, and on, and on, and on. CCISD uses a curriculum called Character Strong for Social-Emotional Learning. So is Character Strong transformative SEL? Absolutely. In the package they sent you, they say it over and over again. Character Strong is transformative middle-school SEL. Character Strong is transformative high-school social-emotional learning. Character Strong is K-12 transformative SEL curriculum that is engaging and easy to understand. Character Strong staff is a who's who of racism and bigotry. Their own CEO asserts on the website's demo that, quote, "equity is woven into every single aspect of the curriculum." It has staff members that regularly assert that race is a social construct created by white people for the sole purposes of oppressing other people. It has members that regularly assert the values of, quote, "privileged walks", and then assert that white people should not have a say in how they feel after those walks take place. That is on the Character Strong podcasts themselves. Welcome to go listen to them. They're quite fascinating. So to paraphrase a board member from the last meeting, fact, it is against Texas law to teach racial scapegoating. Fact, the intent and content of this curriculum is in violation of Texas law, and I am requesting that it be removed from CCISD curriculum. Thank you.
Good evening. First, I want to discuss the district's ongoing failure to comply with the Texas Public Information Act. On May 20th, I requested the vote tallies from the Eastlake Internal Memory and JBC Internal Memory for the May 1st, 2021 election. Despite evidence to the contrary, this district not only claimed that the internal memory sources did not exist, but also had an employee sign an affidavit saying so. Ms. Barker has two emails for you, newly uncovered via a Texas Public Information Act request. They're also posted to CCISDPapers.com, that's CCISDPapers.com, for your convenience. One email dated May 20th, 2021, from Heart Intercivic, states that JBC Internal Memory and Eastlake Internal Memory- East Slate Internal Memory do exist. To retrieve it, all Hart would have to do is conduct a system memory backup. The second email is dated September 3rd, 2021. It confirms that the East Slate machines were indeed backed up several months ago, right here in this very room. So then, why did the district's general counsel send me a letter in October 2021 stating that it had met all of its obligations under the Texas Public Information Act? I have not received the data which I asked for, data which we know exists, and data which the district has withheld for eight months. Once again, I ask, if the data exists and is clearly easy to obtain, what does CCISD have to hide? Clearly, the district does not take its responsibility under the Texas Public Information Act seriously. If I were a state or local prosecutor, I would find this chain of events highly troubling. Second, I am disturbed that this board will not take a vote regarding the district's COVID protocols. In June 2021, this board promised the community a return to normal. But this school year has been anything but normal. Three weeks of no visitors in elementary schools has turned into five months. Instead of remembering Valentine's parties with their parents or grandma bringing them Chick-fil-A for lunch, our children will remember Stark Cafeterias and reminders to distance. Instead of special events like muffins with mom and donuts with dad, they will remember fear and paranoia. We are robbing our children of all the little moments that collectively lead to lifelong happy memories. We need to prioritize children's needs over adult anxiety, and our children need us. Whether it's for a breakfast or lunch visit or more extensive on-campus involvement, parents have a right to be in our schools supporting our children. It is time our actions show that we are willing to prioritize our children over everything else. I challenge each and every one of you to call for a vote on COVID protocols. Go on record. Stop shirking responsibility for the suffering you are imposing on our children. Another election is coming, and we cannot wait to make our voices heard.
Dr. Williams, I have a question. I just, it's my understanding from the information that the board has received that any complaints that were made regarding what had been done and public information requests that had been made and said not met, that the district has gotten notification from the Attorney General of the state that those have all been dismissed and that the district has met its obligations.
I'm not responding. I'm asking Dr. Williams a question.
So, there were complaints filed with the Attorney General's Office that have been dismissed, and I would ask Ms. Sar-Mechanic, District Counsel, if my terminology is correct generally, just speaking generally.
Yes, sir. The complaints Ms. Perizzo has filed with the Attorney General's Office regarding allegations that we, that the district has not complied with the Texas Public Information Act with regard to the disclosure of election records have all been dismissed.
Next, we'll start off with our one-minute speakers, Ms. Monica Mays, followed by Steve May, followed by Jackie Rasko.
Good evening. My name is Monica Mays. I'm active-duty Army. I'm just relocating to Texas, relocating to your ISD, and I have school-aged children. My husband is in the back, and I think I have a simple request, and I have a solution as well. The Transportation Authority sent me here. Obviously, two miles is the radius for bus pickup. We live 1.8 miles, 1.9, just depends on where you live. The solution is directly across from my neighborhood. It's a bus stop proposing adding a crosswalk, some lights, and then the people and the children in my community and the community that's beside me could potentially walk over so they don't have to walk, you know, almost two miles to school or be car riders because it's not possible for my husband or myself to do it. So, that's solution in the problem. Hopefully, you guys can help. Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Steve May.
Hi, I'm Steve May. I'm here to ask you to vote against calling school board elections by plurality. I have only recently become, come to recognize the importance of school board elections, but I'm not alone in this. We have recently had elections with more than two good candidates. I can imagine a scenario where the vote splits 40, 35, 25. It would be wrong to call the election for the candidate with 40 because after a runoff, the candidate with 35 might win decisively. Because school board trustees is such an important position, all should be elected by at least 50% of the voters. Please vote against the proposition to call elections by plurality. Thank you.
Next, we have Jackie Rasko.
Thank you for listening to me tonight. My name is Jackie Rasko. I have four children, two of which have graduated from CCISD, and my youngest, two, are at Ed White. I'd like to know why no one's answered multiple requests through the Public Information Act regarding the last election. I don't believe what was just said here has been resolved. Months and months have still gone by, and there's, no one has provided the information. If there is nothing to hide, then why can't you provide the election results? CCISD violated the Texas Election Code by refusing to provide records and documents prepared for use in an electronic voting system. If there was integrity in this election, show us the results. Patriots are much more aware of the corruption that is going on in all of America at all levels. How can we trust the next CCISD election won't be legitimate if you can't even give us transparency on the last one? We are awake to what's going on here, and we will be watching with a microscope to make sure the next election is run honestly. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Courtney Collins, followed by Dr. Lesec.
My name is Courtney Collins, and I have two children in CCISD, a kindergartner at Ed White and a first grader who's in the virtual learning program. Short background story: My first grader, Kayson, he's a two-time cancer survivor. He was first diagnosed in 2017. He relapsed in June of last year and went through a bone marrow transplant where I was his donor in September of 2021. Throughout this process of chemo, radiation, him being severely immunocompromised, his sister attended school in person at Ed White. I contracted COVID right before Christmas this year, and while we have understandably had an initial panic as a household, nobody in my house, including my severely immunocompromised son, contracted the virus. Why? Because the sirens shows that these kids do not have the same inflammatory response that certain adults have. You can fact-check me with the highly respected doctors at our Texas Children's Hospital. You guys have done a wonderful job of providing parents options when it comes to their kids and COVID accommodations. You've left it up to parents to send their kids to school virtually, send them with mask or maskless. Now is the time to let us as parents decide if we want to come for lunch, parties, et cetera. Please let those of us who have chosen to send our kids to school to attend these events we sent our kids in.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Collins. Thank you, Ms. Collins.
My name is Dr. Janice Richardson-Lesec. I am a mother of two daughters that currently attend Ed White Elementary. I am disappointed and upset that the board changed their minds on letting us come back to school for lunches and school parties at the elementary level. We were allowed to attend the overcapacity open house in September, turkey trot in November, and were allowed to play patty cake at the Jungle Jam in December, not to mention allowing higher levels to attend school dances, high school musicals, et cetera. But when it comes to going and eating with our elementary children or attending a class party, it somehow poses a threat. The reasoning behind this, or the lack thereof, is ludicrous. We, as parents, are missing out on our kids' elementary school experience. For those of you that want to live your life scared, stay home, run out and get your fourth, fifth, and sixth booster, or wear a useless, proven, ineffective face diaper. The majority of us are tired of this overblown hysteria. COVID has stripped us of enough, and it won't be allowed, and I won't allow these to take our precious moments from our young children. These kids need to return to some type of normal.
Thank you, Dr. Lesec. And I wanted to thank all of our speakers tonight. I know, you know, I'll probably catch some criticism for not cutting comments short, but I think it's important that, you know, sometime our constituents get a chance to finish their thought, especially as they're running up on, against their time. As part of board privilege, I just wanted to share some things. I wanted to talk with our teachers. The job that our CCISD educators are doing is not easy, especially as we navigate COVID. Growing up with two parents who dedicated their careers to the education profession, I have seen the joy, heartache, frustration, and the giving that an educator performs daily, monthly, and yearly. It is a calling, a passion, and a thrill to command the attention and help shape the minds of our youth. As trustees, we get to see the body of work that you perform daily as we travel through the district, attend events, interact with our students, and visit with our graduates out and about within the community. Just this week, some of us were able to read to our elementary kids, support our FFA students at their annual auction, attend PTA awards reflections in order to see the work that our talented students from the elementary up to the high school level achieve. The job that you do is truly extraordinary and a privilege to witness. As many of you have had to pick up the slack, adapt your lesson plans, conference with parents, and help us maintain and sustain the excellence within our district, I want to say that your efforts do not go unnoticed. As we slowly come out of this latest phase of COVID and address teacher and sub shortages, the stress and strain over closing the learning gaps over the past two years, we are now faced with the frustration, anger, hyperbole, and frankly, the background noise of the partisanship within today's society. Unfortunately, we are at a period where people are too comfortable in treating each other disrespectfully instead of finding common ground and working from there. As we enter the second half of the year, I hope you take the time to reflect on the reason why you joined the teaching profession and keep that first and foremost centered within you. Since this past spring, leading up to now, I get asked all the time about the latest gossip, rumors, innuendo, et cetera, and I must confess, it doesn't bother me. The reason why I'm able to compartmentalize this is I stay true to why I got involved in volunteering with the district many years ago. At the school level, culminating with my service on the board, I enjoy interacting with the kids first and foremost. I want to help improve the district and serve my community. It's very simple. Anything other than that is just background noise. I also wanted to address some of the things that we heard tonight. A complaint filed to the Attorney General's Office was dismissed, and I quote, "Based upon the representations of the board, we understand that the district has made a good-faith effort to provide information that is responsive to the request. Accordingly, our file will remain closed." And furthermore... Board privilege. Accordingly, our file will remain closed. And furthermore, I will say that the board takes all correspondence into account. As board president, I will answer to the best of my ability, but just because you give input does not mean that the board will act upon that recommendation. There are many factors that go into making decisions, and not everyone will agree with them. Also, I will call out abuse of the board. Abuse as defined as the improper usage or treatment of a thing, often to unfairly or improperly gain benefit. Abuse can come in many forms, such as physical, verbal maltreatment, injury, assault, violation, unjust practices, crimes, or other types of aggression. Many of us on the board have endured those, whether that's threats, verbal threats, or whether that's somebody that takes it upon themselves to contact your job because they don't like you. But that does not deter your board from doing their work. Lastly, I want to congratulate our FFA students on a successful show and auction this past week, our fine arts, which are getting ready to compete or perform across the state in the coming weeks. So, we wish those kids good luck. And kudos to Coach Crawford, whom I had the pleasure of watching her teams play ever since she moved over from Brook to Springs, and Coach Simons, who not only won his 500th match, but a lot of his athletes and assistant coaches have gone on to become coaches either in our district or surrounding districts. And next, we'll move on to consent agenda. Does anybody wish to pull anything? Mr. Sanchez?
I'd like to pull item 7, please.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Does anybody else wish to pull anything? So, so far, we're going to pull item 7. Could I have a motion?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Bowen.
I move adoption of the consent agenda as prepared by the superintendent minus item number 7.
Thank you for that recommendation, Mr. Bowen. Do I have a second?
I would like a second.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Seeing no comment, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, please raise your hand, and the motion carries unanimously. And we'll go with item 7.
Good evening. Board of Trustees, Dr. Williams. We have the audit results for the district as of August 31st, 2021. We did have a meeting last week with your finance committee and did go over the details of the audit and the presentation, and I'll try to go over some of the highlights of that presentation. We did discuss the role of the audit team, and we did that in detail at that meeting. Overall, Loopy Garcia is the engagement partner and has final authority to issue the audit report. Each one of our audits require a secondary partner review for quality control, and that was performed by Tom Peterson. I, myself, Dan Hernandez, was the senior manager responsible for all work papers. Quick overview of the audit process. We start during the summertime. We do interim procedures. We come out. We review. Many of your departments speak with many of your individual employees. We gain an understanding of your controls and your procedures. From that understanding, we test your controls, your procedures, including controls related to your federal single audit grant money. After the end of the fiscal year, August 31st, the district will close their books. They'll finalize the numbers. They'll prepare the reconciliations, provide us the supporting documentation. We will come out and perform substantive procedures. At this point, we are reviewing your reconciliations, your supporting documentation. We are receiving confirmations for cash, investments, debt. After we have gained sufficient audit evidence, we are ready to issue our opinion. The purpose of the audit is to express opinion on the financial statements and various other parts of the audit. There are three types of audits that we can issue. On this slide, we indicate a red light as the type of audit you would not, audit opinion you would not want to receive, a disclaimer of opinion. The yellow light is a little bit better opinion, considered a qualification. We were able to gather significant audit evidence except for a certain area because of a scope limitation or a departure from generally accepted accounting principles. The green light represents the type of audit all... The green light represents the type of audit all entities want to receive, an unmodified opinion. For the fiscal year ended August 31st, 2021, we are issuing an unmodified or clean opinion for the district's financial statements. This is the highest level assurance we as auditors can provide that the financial statements are materially stated in all aspects. The audit was also conducted in accordance with general accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards, and this opinion report can be found on page one through three of the annual comprehensive financial report, which you should have received a copy earlier. That's about 170-page document. The second report that we issue is the auditor's report on internal controls over compliance. In this report, we are issuing no material weaknesses identified, no significant findings reported on internal controls over financial reporting, and no instances of noncompliance material to the financial statements. This second report can be found on page 155 to 156 of the annual report. The third and final report that we issue is the federal single audit. Since the district receives and expends more than $750,000 of federal grants, you are required to have a federal single audit. In that single audit, there is a schedule of expenditure of federal awards, which amounted to $37.4 billion of total expenditures the district had of federal award monies. During that single audit, we are required to do a risk assessment and select certain federal programs to audit. In this year, the federal, the major federal programs are the child nutrition cluster, which had $8.5 million of expenditures, the elementary and secondary school elementary relief, the ESER funds, which is approximately $12.9 million, and then we did have a smaller grant titled for Part A. We are, we have no internal control findings related to each major program. We are issuing an unmodified opinion on compliance. Once again, highest level assurance. No instances of noncompliance or questioned costs were noted. This third report can be found on page 157 and 158 of the annual financial report. For your statement of net position, which is found on page 17, this is basically your balance sheet. On this statement, it's similar to what a business would issue where it will show all the district's assets that are owned and all the liabilities that the district has. Total assets and deferred outflow equaled approximately $1.5 billion. Of that amount, your largest assets are your capital assets, your land, building, equipment, facilities, and that was just a little bit north of $1 billion, and that was net of depreciation. You also had cash and investments of $326 million at the end of the year. Your total liabilities and deferred inflows were approximately $1.6 billion. Your largest liabilities are your bonds payable and unamortized premium of $1.1 billion. The next two bullets, net pension liability and other post-employment benefits, are related to the Texas retirement system. The pension liability is for your retirement of your employees. The OPEB, the other post-employment benefit, is related to retirees' health care. Both of these liabilities are required to be placed onto your financial statement, but they are provided by the state by actuarial reports, and they represent a proportionate share of the liability. Here we get into the general fund revenues. Your largest revenue comes from property tax of $239 million, or approximately 67% of general fund revenues. Your next largest revenue was state aid at $87 million, and that represents 24%. The property tax and state aid is approximately 90% of your revenue, and the other parts of the revenue are other state funding of approximately $20 million, federal funding of $8 million, and other local funding of $3.2 million. For fiscal year 2021, total revenues were approximately $357.6 million, and that was an increase of approximately $500,000 from the fiscal year 20. For general fund expenditures, your largest expenditure is related to instruction and related services at $235.5 billion, and that represented 67% of general fund expenditures. Support services, non-students, equaled approximately $41.9 million, and that was 12%, followed by support services, students, at $37.7 million, or 11%. And then the final parts of the expenditures are instruction, school leadership, at 25.8%, 7% is a very good ratio there. Support services, administration, 5.2; intergovernmental, of $3.1 million, and others of approximately $200,000. Total revenue for the general, sorry, total expenditures for the general fund was approximately $351.5 million, up from $348.1 in the prior year. On page 71, you will find a budget to actual schedule for your general fund. In this schedule, we are seeing budgeted revenues of $365 million exceeded actual amounts by 7.3. Actual expenditures of $351.5 million were less than budgeted amounts by approximately $16 million, a positive variance. For the revenues and other sources exceeded expenditures and other uses by approximately $200,000. This was your, basically, your net increase to your general fund, the $200,000. This resulted in ending fund balance of $75.1 million. Of that $75 million, 4.6 was non-spendable, and then unassigned fund balance was $70.5 million. This is available for spending. This slide here represents that the unassigned fund balance related to expenditures is, there's a board policy that states two months of fund balance, which is approximately 16.7. This slide shows from fiscal year 2017 to 2021, you are meeting that goal. We also have on page 112 and 113, two other schedules, budget to actual schedules, one for the child nutrition fund and one for the debt service fund. On the child nutrition fund, actual revenues of 5.2 were less than budgeted amounts by $6 million. Actual expenditures were less than budgeted amounts by $2.3 million. Once again, that's a positive variance. Overall, fund balance decreased by $47,000, resulting in ending fund balance for the child nutrition fund of 3.9. For your debt service fund, your budget to actual, actual revenues were exceeded budgeted amounts by approximately $400,000. Actual expenditures were less than budgeted amounts by approximately $200,000, again, a positive variance. And the fund balance increased for the debt service fund by approximately $7.2 million, resulting in any fund balance for your debt service fund of $40.6 million. These following slides are required audit communication to the governing board. Related to accounting policies, we reviewed the district's accounting policies, and we believe those policies are appropriate and meet industry standards. Because not every number in the annual financial report can be tied to an invoice, a bank statement, an investment statement, there are estimates. We reviewed those estimates. Those largest estimates in your financial statements include state aid, allowances for uncollectible taxes, net pension, and OPEB. Based on our review, we believe all those estimates are reasonable. We encountered no difficulties in performing the audit. We thank management for that. There was no uncorrected misstatements. We had no disagreements with management over accounting principles. One of the last piece of audit evidence we received is a management representation letter. This is basically confirming that management has given us all the information we requested to complete the audit. We are not aware of any consultations with other auditors on accounting matters, and during the audit, or during the year, management may ask of us questions about accounting principles, standards, and we believe our responses had no basis of our retention as your auditors. That's basically all I have, and I'll take any questions.
And before I open it up, Mr. Hernandez, I just wanted to let you know that please extend our best to Mr. Garcia. We're used to him coming down and making this report. Not, not that we didn't want to see you tonight, but I know as long as I've been on the board for about six or seven years, he's always given us that, that report. And we just want to thank him because as I understand, this will be the last time I believe that we get an audit report from you. As, as, as I understand, we, we, we have a nice promotion-
That is correct. We would have a conflict, and we would not want that.
Exactly, exactly. So just wanted to thank you for the years of service and, and the, you know, second set of eyes that you put on, you know, our financials. And with that, I wanted to open it up for any, any questions or comments.
I would just- Second that and just say that we appreciate with the pen and that the years of service that have come to CCISD and that we always could be sure that we had good auditing going on and good support of the district. So we appreciate the, the years of service they've given.
Thank you very much. And for Mr. Garcia, unfortunately, we have many board meetings today, so everybody has to divide and conquer. I'm not sure if you guys got the shortest stick.
You did a fabulous job.
Thank you.
Mr. Sanchez, did you want to add anything?
I would just also like to say thank you. Having a clean audit annually is important to really the standard that we set across the district and how we're managing budgets very closely. Having your assurance and a clean audit is something that we don't take for granted, but we know is really critical to maintaining the trust of our citizens and recognize that it's important that we're doing everything we can with the resources that we receive. So thank you for walking through the slides. I did have the benefit of seeing them last week in finance, but definitely appreciate that we could share that with the community tonight as well.
Thank you.
Anyone else? And Mr. Sanchez, did you want to make a motion?
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation, that the Board of Trustees accept the annual financial report.
Thank you for that motion, Mr. Sanchez. Do I have a second?
You do. I'd like to second that.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Any comment? Seeing no comment, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. And the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you much.
And we will move on to items B. Consider approval of the 2022, 2023 school year academic calendar and elementary summer school dates.
All right. Good evening. Nice to see everyone. I'm back to talk about calendar a little bit more. Before I start, just want to say happy board appreciation. We do appreciate all that you do. But we will quickly move into some data for our calendar discussion today. You may remember from last month, we went back out to gather some more data from community and staff to, to get a bigger picture, hopefully, and we did. So I have some data to share with you. And our outcomes for this short presentation today will be to look at all of the drafts again briefly and focus on our, our newest one that we added, which was draft four. Look at the data. We collected data from December 10th to January 4th and review that. Look how, how many and, and what they, what they, their preferences were, and, and then consider a recommendation. So you may remember last time, we added calendar draft four, and I forgot to start by saying you have a blue folder with this information in it as well as a summary document in the back. But we added calendar draft four, which by and large gave us another option to have a three-weekend winter break, which is popular in our options one, two, and three. We did have an option for a three-weekend, but we also had options for not a three-weekend. So we wanted to add another option in, and the details for draft four are that the winter break would begin early. December 16th would be our final day of school before winter break began next, well, December now, coming up December. And we would also have a midweek start, consistent PL days, our professional learning days and holidays, as well as the last day of instruction aligned with the others. It did have the largest variance in the first and the second semester, which we talked a little bit about last time, last time I was here last month. So 80 days for the fall semester and 95 for the spring. But this is the one that we added. And so you can see the summary information here that's also included in your, in your folder. But the consistent pieces, we have the consistent transition day on all of them. Our first day varies just a little bit, the 16th or the 17th of August. And then that, oh, that midweek start is very popular with the, with the teachers, and I would assume with parents also, having been a parent at one point and having student, a student in school. We have some floating holidays. We have several consistent professional learning days. And, and then the winter break was really a big part of the conversation. And so you can see with draft one, it's a midweek, as well as draft three had a midweek leaving for the break. Draft two and four both had the Friday, which loops in that third weekend, which is, which is important for a lot of people. And so then you see the returns sort of are according to when we leave. And then spring breaks are consistent, last day of schools are consistent, and you can see the number of days there for the first semester and the second semester. So let's look at a little bit of the data for that, from the opportunity for people to express preference. You can see we had quite a few staff members participate, over 3,000, which was more than we had gathered in the previous time, time span. And then community vote was near, right under 6,000, which is, is a great number also for, for participation. So you can see our staff pie there on the, on the right, or on the left, I should say. The staff pie is on the left. We had very close between draft two and draft four, which as you might remember are the ones, both of the ones with the three weekend during the winter. 41% chose draft two, while 39% chose draft four. So clearly, those were the front runners with the, with the staff. And community, similarly, but even more so, draft four stood out as the lead. And while draft two was the second choice for the community, it was a little, little closer. Overall, our data looks like this. We had about 44% choose draft four as their preference, and then 30% chose draft two as their preference. And then you can see the others are about 13%, a little over, or 91, a little over 9,100 participants. So I'm looking at that data. A recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve draft four as the CCISD academic calendar for the 2223 school year.
And thank you, Dr. Silva, for that presentation. I'll open it up for comment. Mr. Bowen?
I'll, I'll just make a quick comment. These results maybe do show why runoffs can be valuable. Nobody, none of the, I keep thinking in terms of candidates, but none of the, none of the options got above 50%. But I, I do think if you really dig into the, the details of the proposals, it seems like draft four kind of combines the advantages of a lot of different ones. And, and so I, I think for people who were hoping for an earlier start, they clearly preferred it over draft one. And for people who were, who were after the three weekends, they preferred it over draft two. And so, so I, I think draft four is a good consensus option. So I'm glad we went back and reran this.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Any further-
Yeah, not so much question, but comments, Mr. Bowen. I'm glad to see transition day is still in there. I think that's something that the district and the parents, the kids, it's very popular. and people like that. And, and then really, the, I'm, I'm satisfied and happy to see the draft four come out. The concern that I had with draft two was the last day before winter break was forty-eight hours before Christmas.
Right.
And for a lot of, you, you know, I've got three daughters, you know, I need time. But, but, you know, and, and for the teachers, the teachers with children out there and needing time after they get out after that last day, it's just, in my opinion, not enough time for them. I'll let them speak for themselves. But, but, you know, again, the biggest differences were having that forty-eight hours on draft two versus a week, a week to get your tree and your presents and everything all wrapped up. And I think for the teachers, I'm happy to see that that rose to the top. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cottrell. Anyone else? Dr. Silva, I, I just wanted to, you know, make a couple of comments. Number one, just to kind of echo Mr. Bowen and Mr. Cottrell, I'm happy that we were able to resend out the calendars for votes. As I recall, just going back, I, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, was calendar four presented during the initial? Can, can you talk about that?
Yes, yes, absolutely. So, the, the committee that works to develop different calendar drafts actually developed about seven or eight, I can't, six or seven or eight, and then they do informal feedback, and then they narrow it down through our committee process to three or four, and we struggle typically. We want to have two or three because the more you have, the more, you know, that's what happens with the data when you have more options. But, so in the DEIC, we voted to eliminate one in the larger DEIC group before moving forward to the community for the larger input, and so that one was the one that was removed, and then it was added back. So, yes, it was, it was sort of always one of the ones that was on the table, and, and I think that, that three-weekend piece is so important for so many people that that might be something we consider in our smaller DEIC committee next year to not create too many options that don't have that, because we know that's, we know that's what people want. It's, it's almost like Thanksgiving week, you know, once we have the week, it's, it's hard to take that back, so. I'm not, I'm not trying to take that back. I need that week, too.
And then I know that we, we heard from and we received feedback from various, various groups, such as our, our single parents and things of that nature. So, you know, I, I know, and I, I want to thank the committee, and I want to thank staff for kind of revisiting and retouching on some of those because that helps out, you know, a lot of our constituents out there. So, I, I just wanted to commend. Another thing I wanted to say is I was highly impressed because I think the ninety-one hundred participants is probably the largest, I want to say about three years ago, I think, we, we had roughly close to eight thousand participants, so to see that participation is, is encouraging.
The first year we moved to some social media, we had a, an increase, but you're right. I think this is the largest in the last at least five or seven years since I've been there.
So, what I, I, I encourage our, our community to, you know, when, when these things come out, and I, I know that sometime it's a lot of emails and a lot of, a lot of things like that, but they do, you know, they are weighted heavily. We encourage that feedback and we encourage hearing, because like I said, we, you know, I, I, I think it's kudos to the district that they will go back and revisit and kind of take some things under consideration that they might not have the first time. So, thank you for that, and if there's no other comment, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Cottrell?
I'll make the motion to approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year academic calendar as presented for option four.
Thank you, Mr. Cottrell, for that motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Sanchez, thank you for that second. If there's no comment, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, please raise your hand, and the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. McClarty, item C, and I guess we'll combine them with D. C and D.
They're, they're certainly related, and we, we can cover them both first if you'd like, or we can go one item by item. But the first, first board item we've got is the approval of an order and resolution calling school board trustee election by plurality vote, and this is the same election order we've had for the eighteen years I've been here and longer than that. So, I just wanted to let you know that. This is for single member District One and at-large District B. The seventh day of May will be the election day. We have some changes because we redrew, the board redrew its lines, so there's going to be a few changes on here that I'll note as we go through. When we look at the early voting locations, Clear Creek ISD, this, this building here is our primary early voting location. We also have the learner support center right next to Clear Lake High School. Westbrook Intermediate is a new location, and that one is being moved from Clearbrook High School in hopes that maybe the, the location of Westbrook will be more conducive to more voters coming in and voting. It's right on that main highway there. So Westbrook Intermediate will be an early voting location for the first time. I've talked with the principal there, and she's fine with doing that. We've got a great location where we can place the machines, too, so it's going to be good. Creekside Intermediate, we used that for the first time last year as an early voting location, so now we have four early voting, one in each quadrant of our district. Early voting begins April twenty-fifth, and at Monday through Friday of that week, April twenty-fifth through April twenty-ninth would be an eight AM to five PM voting time for early voting. Saturday, the thirtieth, Monday, May second, and Tuesday, May third, would be from seven AM to seven PM voting times. Exhibit A includes all of the voting day locations, so the, the May seventh locations will be on exhibit A. So, we have, as usual, for District One, we've got Robinson Elementary, which will remain, the vote, early voting location. You'll notice that the precinct numbers at the top, we normally put those in. Those aren't all known yet. We've got Galveston County's precincts set and given to us this late, I guess it was late last week, and then we still haven't got anything from Harris County yet. So, I'm not sure if they're finished and just haven't been able to get it to us or what the status is. But once we get those precincts, we'll put those in so that voters know the precincts that are located in their locations. Single member District One also has a new location, Clear Falls High School. This was Stewart Elementary, and we, we believe that Clear Falls is more centrally, centrally located in a good area where there's lots of homes around it, so it'd be a good voting location on Election Day. District Two, there's three locations in that district. Ferguson Elementary's been a longtime location, so that will remain. The other election day location that has changed is Ralph Parr Elementary will be the election day location for District Two. It was Space Center Intermediate, but with the new lines, Space Center's way up, really not very close to very many homes in the district, and Parr is right, kind of centralized well within District Two. Parr used to be the District Five location before we moved those lines. And then the city of Nassau Bay is our joint voting location with the city, and it'll be at the city, city hall there, city of Nassau Bay, and all the district north of the creek can easily vote at that location as well. District Three, we have one change. We have, Clear Lake Intermediate is a new location. That location was at Ward Elementary, but Ward is no longer in District Three, it's now in District Four, and so Clear Lake Inter, Intermediate is on El Camino and El Dorado. It's a very centrally located spot with a lot of traffic that goes by that we can put signs out, and people will know to vote if they are not aware. Learner Support Center has been a longtime location, so we're keeping that at District Three. District Four has two, two new locations. So, we've got the Westbrook Intermediate on Election Day. It's going to be the early voting and Election Day location at Westbrook instead of Clearbrook. And then the other location will be Ward Elementary instead of Brookside Intermediate, because the District Four now goes up into the, the other side of forty-five on the east side, and Ward is a location people are used to voting at, although for another district trustee position. But we'll make sure we get out the information that has changed, for sure. District Five also has two new Election Day locations. The first one is Creekside Intermediate. Of course, we have early voting there, so it makes sense to keep, have Election Day and early voting at the same location. And it was Ross Elementary, so that one's changed. The other one is Bowers Slag Elementary, which is central to the district on Highway ninety-six. That was the old Parr location, and we moved that to Bowers Slag. It's a good location within the middle of the district with a, a high traffic count as well. So, with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions or entertain a vote.
And I'll open it up for comment. Mr. Larson?
Yeah, earlier, there was a public comment requesting us to hold a majority election, majority vote election, and I just, I just ran over to the Texas election code, and you've cited the, the code in your election order eleven point zero five seven, and I just took a quick look over there, and we could decide to do that if we wanted to. Unfortunately, the Texas law requires us to make that decision at least a hundred and eighty days before the election. So, I would just like to get this on record, that if we ever wanted to do that, we would have to make that decision much earlier. We cannot make it at this late date.
Thank, thank you for looking that up, Mr. Larson, because I've kind of had that question as well, so thank you. Anyone else? Seen no, no question, I'll, I'll call for a motion. Mr. Sanchez?
Mr. President, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation that the Board of Trustees approve the order calling school board trustee election as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez, for that motion. I'll ask for a second.
I'll second.
Mr. Cottrell, thank you for the second. Seen no comment, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, please raise your, raise your hand. And all opposed?
I'm abstaining.
You're abstaining? Okay.
I'd like to change mine to abstain, too. Thank you very much.
Okay. So, we have five, five, four, and two abstaining. And Mr. McClarty will go right into D?
Okay, thank you. This is consider approval of the joint election agreement with the city of Nassau Bay. Back in two thousand and six, the legislature required districts, school districts to have a, hold a joint election with the city or a county and, for their elections, and we have May elections, so we have a, have established since two thousand and six the use of Nass, city of Nassau Bay for our joint voting location in the district. It is centrally located. We've used it for a long time, fifteen years, and we hold separate elections, because many times, not every time, but many times, city of Nassau Bay may not even have the election. They may have nobody running against opposed candidates, so we still need that location, so we will still hold it there. So, we've set it up for the last fifteen years to be separate voting locations. That way, if they close down, don't need to have the election, we still have our people there running our election as, as we have. Minimal cost, I don't know that they've ever billed us, quite frankly, but they could bill us up to two hundred and fifty dollars for the rental of that facility if they're not holding the location, but quite frankly, I'm not sure that they've ever billed us for that, so we thank them for that.
And thank you, Mr. McClarty. Are there any comment?
I'll just make a comment just about Nassau Bay. It's, it's great that we have these community partners with so many municipalities that we represent, and, and it's just another reason why, you know, it speaks volumes about these kind of partnerships and why it's so important that we have them. So, I appreciate Nassau Bay for doing that, and hopefully they don't charge us.
Yes.
Any other comment? Seen no comment, I'll ask for a motion.
I'd like to move that we adopt the measure as proposed.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Seen no comment, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And all opposed? And I guess we have two abstaining. So, the motion carries five.
Thank you.
With two abstaining. And seen no further business, I'll call this meeting adjourned at eight twenty-seven.
We're sending you a bill.
Oh, thank you.
Can't you give him a, can't you give him a better gavel? That's like, what's up with the gag gavel? That's not very nice.
I don't gag gavel. It's like the, it's like the exploding, like, uh, thank you. It's like the exploding golf ball.